Recording in progress. All right, six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own, in this whole, with its just system.
I don't know what's going on. It has a problem, it's a bad incident.
I literally understand it.
All right, it's okay. Yeah, it happens.
That's not a concern.
All right, so um, the meeting is being reported by Norton Media and Norton Public Schools. Uh, so hi Gina, everybody else, you guys are recording? Um, vote to approve, I just said hi Gina, somebody else was really there, he said hi to Peter.
Good.
Um, so vote to approve the minutes of March twenty first joint meeting, does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Um, minutes?
Nope.
Is there a motion to approve the March twenty first, twenty twenty four minutes?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor? Five. And then, um, April eleventh, open session meeting minutes, everyone have a chance to look at that? Anything on that? There are motions to approve April eleventh minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor? Five. All right, that was quick, I guess now I'm up. Warrants, I reviewed and approved the following. School expense warrants, April eleventh, twenty twenty four, seven hundred and sixty five thousand, two hundred and ninety five dollars and seventy seven cents. And school payroll warrants, April fourth, twenty twenty four, one million, one hundred and seventy two thousand, nine hundred and fifty eight dollars and four cents, every student has part record. All right, vote to approve transportation bid.
Let's see, you're up. All right, so, um, we are rec- um, based on the memo that, um, we have given you, we are recommending, um, in the award for our invitation bid that we had for our school transportation that was released in March twenty. Um, we had three big funds in March twenty seventh where we only had one vendor, um, come, which was teaching out of Bloom. Um, the deadline for the bids, return of the bids was on this Monday, April twenty second at eleven AM. Um, even though we had six, um, vendors returned bids, only one was submitted. And, um, two people at the bid opening, which was, um, Matt Bloom, from H L Bloom, and Steve, who's been, who's been, how do you pronounce that name? Um, and the, the only bid was a five year contract for seven million, one hundred and eighty nine thousand, one hundred and twenty five, um, from H L Bloom, which is our current contractor. Um, right now, we have the two tiered system, tier two buses and tier three. And the first, um, it's a five point two increase over our tier two bus and a four point six seven increase over tier three. Um, and combined with our athletic buses and our late bus, the total increase was around four point eight percent for, um, FY twenty five. Um, so we are recommending that you, um, away to approve.
So, on this, I know we're looking at school start times and all that, is Bloom aware that we could make changes to the routes?
Yeah.
That's okay with them?
Um.
Within the contract, or would you have to redo it when that comes?
You don't have to redo it, in the bid specifications, we made sure that, that the key to six was discussed, um, that we could change the tiered system, so, um, I have the, for you, if you want to keep that on, but the, um, we asked for, they did a tier four, they gave us prices for that too, so they give us comparative data that we don't have currently, but they gave us options, so they know that that is being discussed, it's written in the bid spec.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
And then hypothetically, if we were to cut all the way down, no, do no middle school busing, what happens to the contract?
Um, you can only cut twenty five percent of a contract.
Okay.
Um, that's just master and a lot of anything, so, um, that's why the number of buses that we've discussed at one point was uncertain. So, as long as we don't go below, which it comes out, we have an odd number. It would be like three point seven five, you know what I mean? So, um, as long as you don't go below that, then you stay within the contract limit.
Got it.
And we would have to, we would have to bring some buses to the middle school because, um, the requirements for mandated busing go to sixth grade, so there would still be buses coming here.
Um, and then, two more questions.
Sure.
Can you kind of define, just so everyone's aware, what is a returned bid and a submitted bid? What is that kind of, cause you said six companies returned?
Um, so they returned. They arrested the bid, so they asked for bid specifications. So you have to record how many people asked for the bid specs, um, which is good, so they wanted to see what we were asking for. Um, so we always like to record that, put that on public record, and then also, but then only one actually returned the bid.
So six companies said, hey, we want to see what you got.
That's correct.
And then, five of those companies said, we have nothing to do with you.
They just didn't come, or didn't go, lose money.
Which that might.
I would say it's very typical, it's very typical for multiple companies to request the bid specs.
That's true. Which would get yourself.
Yes, well, and, um, you know, typically, we only want that.
Do we know how, like, in general, how many carriers are there? Cause I can only think of like four.
Well, it's interesting too, because the ones that asked, other than H L Bloom, were not one of the ones that were around yet.
So they're trying to make their way. I thought I just, and then, you're just trying to cover this. I'll probably, I'm calling, the idea of this is a competitive process, it's a really shared, yeah, this is. Um, and then can you, like, what is, so when it says the first year is a five point two one percent increase over tier two, and a four point six seven over tier three, kind of what are those tiers? In relation to, I guess?
Sure, so we have, um, five buses at tier two, which means they move into two schools, two reps. And tier three is they do, uh, three runs, three reps, so, um, it would be high school, L G N, then it would be Hay Middle, then J C S, that would be three tier bus, which ten buses do that, and then the other five do only two. So that's why when we have the two and three at once, I remember years ago, you had four kids. Um, and then we reduce it to two and three.
Yeah, I think we're reducing combined the, um.
Yes. But I can provide you with a, such a form where actually shows the breakout of, um, in the increase of the year two, so it ranges the, from four point six, uh, year two to five point five, then back five point two six, then back five. Um, and based off of just, um, us asking around, doing some research with colleagues, they came in a very reasonable price at, um, just under five. Yeah, other communities saw things around seven, eight, nine percent increases, so we were really happy with this bid from each of them. And, um, they were happy to have that five year contract as well, so that was something that, I think helps unfold that.
Seven million dollars, a lot of money there, I'm guessing.
Also, I think they.
That is a lot of money.
Read a newspaper and know that we don't have a ton of money right now, so I'm sure. So, now we can pay this. It's seven point one million dollars over five years, so we pay one point four nine, yeah, one point four million dollars for the next five years.
Ish.
Ish.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not equal thread, but yes.
Okay, now hypothetically. Not that this probably won't happen, but if we got two million dollars next year that we could put towards busing, would that, could we pay down?
Like an advance pay?
Advance pay, yes.
Yeah.
I don't know why you would. Well, cause you could then say, if you had, if we had additional, let's just hypothetically say next year, we're working these circles, of six hundred thousand dollars, could we take six hundred thousand dollars and give it to Bloom, and then that would reduce our cost moving forward? I don't think that's, I don't think that's.
That's not like a parting, no, we can renegotiate the, like, say, they did well with the first two years, but that's kind of our situation, I'm assuming. Um, but if that five percent we wanted sooner, or we had more money here, we can change, we can work with them, see if they were opting to change their percentages throughout the course of the five years, of the increases, as long as the bottom line stays the same. And we also can't prepay for services.
Okay.
Um, with, as part of the, the whole school finance component, anything that we pay has to go within that fiscal year. So, um.
There's one thing we can prepay, we can figure something. Tuition, some.
Sometimes tuition, um, in, in certain cases, but typically you have to, the, the services have to be rendered during that fiscal year.
And this starts July one? And then, from the, so we have a, for next year, so fiscal year twenty five, we have a one point four million dollar bus fee, that the district is paying, how much do we make in user fees?
Around one, one hundred and thirty, give or take.
But we, the district is paying, basically, one point three million dollars in busing, that's, with no user fees, sorry, that's with user fees involved.
I'm a little under that, yeah.
Yes, so, we're looking at one point three million dollars to massive cost corrections, that, that has nothing to do with actually charging the buses. Right, good.
Any other questions?
No.
You have a motion to approve the transportation bid as written?
We really have a choice.
That's why I'm like so loud about it, okay.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
All right.
All right, vote on elementary E L A program adoption, Brian?
Hi. Thank you for the, uh, nice discussion over the last couple of meetings about the program. Um, as we, kind of to bring us back to this point in time, we've had multiple rounds of negotiation with H M H. We've been really fortunate to have a flexible partner, we've been able to, you know, deduct, uh, just about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the total asking price, um, over a five year period, so, um, if, to recall from last meeting, the committee, I believe, was looking for the five year adoption plan and the cost, um, as kind of the, the target for, for us. So the target number, uh, all in with everything is two hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy three dollars and sixty nine cents. H M H is willing to pay, uh, allow us to pay that over a three year period. So they would be looking for a thirty four percent, um, payment in year one, that is sixty eight thousand, ninety three dollars and five cents. For year two and year three, each would comprise thirty three percent of the total ask. The year two and year three cost would be sixty six thousand, ninety dollars and thirty one cents.
And just going back to my question before, we have this money because we will be paying what we currently have, and then we had some money budgeted already.
Yes, and we have some, we have some offsets, so what this will allow us to do is some consumables that we get, for instance, for foundations, we will, we will not order those, so the cost avoidance to the district will be about thirty thousand.
Mm-hmm, okay. I just want to make sure we're not, you know, finding money, right, but I just want to be as parent as to how we're paying for this.
Yes. Brian, good job on the, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank, thank you, I really just, uh, you know, I appreciate sometimes these things get a little sticky, um, but I appreciate everybody's questions and the discussion about this because, um, you know, I know in just honoring the work that, uh, you know, G is here tonight, and the rest of the field test team, but as well as the curriculum council, and all the elementary folks have done over the last year and a half, it's really, you know, I really see this as a validation of, of all the time that they put in, and I will say this, and I'm not afraid to say it, it's going to be a driver of our improvement, um, across multiple metrics, sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
I think this is one of the more in-depth curriculum conversations we've had in the file, with this program, and for a variety of different reasons, because we had asked questions about how can we do better, then we went out and find it, and now the, obviously the questions are constantly surrounding money, which we were able to understand where, where we're coming from at that, and work with us, so, um, you know, thank you to you and, and the, the staff for really following through what we asked them to do.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, this is just a, just a text, I think, why isn't a five year program that's a ten year, right? We have the program and the licenses for five years, um, they would like full payment over a three year window, yeah.
And this is why those things you can prepaid. There you go, lend me an extra money, ready. Yeah, I mean, thank you guys, Gina, you too, for, for all your work, there was never a doubt that this is what needed to happen, but when we brought this up at a time where we're talking about budget, we just needed to make sure that, you know, we did everything we could to get the best, you know, pricing and all that stuff, and just make sure, you know, the community knows that, how we're paying for it, you know, just optics of it, so. Nice job, you guys, thank you. Anybody have anything else? All right, so do we have a motion to approve the elementary E L A program adoption?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Oh, in favor?
All right.
Congratulations, you guys.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Right. And we'll do good things with those little ones.
We will.
Yeah.
We love the team, team is ready, and, uh, they're just so excited, we're gonna get everything going tomorrow morning.
I know this is a little bit of, uh, good news in the sound, but it hasn't been a lot of good news. All right, so we'll move on, discussion and vote on school choice.
Okay, um, so I shared some information with you earlier of yesterday, uh, and I wanted to, um, talk about some of the district talks, um, of school choice, and first I want to, uh, thank Casey, Casey's here, um, Alex Anborn, who is, uh, one of the administrative assistants, or the administrative assistants, excuse me, in special education office, and Christine, who has spent a huge amount of time going through, looking at special education services, pouring out student I E Ps, um, double checking them against our own staff rates, um, and putting this information together for you, um. I want to start first with the fixed costs and the variable costs, uh, Dan and I have spent a lot of time talking about, um, what makes something variable versus what makes something fit, um, and I appreciate the conversations that we've had. Uh, so the information that you have in front of you today looks a little bit different than it did yesterday. Um, I had, you know, based on, you know, just my thought process, had included all of the teacher salary information there, and what we, Dan and I discussed earlier today is really, it would just be that teacher salary that we could potentially reduce if we did not have choice. And looking at our numbers, the only place that we could really actually reduce a classroom teacher, maybe, would be in J C S in grade three, because you have fourteen, um, full trip students at that grade level. Um, at really any other level, there is not enough, um, information, or not enough students at that grade level, or, um, spread across classrooms, that would make a significant impact to the number of classrooms there. So when you take a look at the variable costs that are, you know, at times dependent on student enrollment, or looking at instructional supplies, or looking at technology hardware or software, if we are providing students with device, um, general, general supplies within the school, so, for example, art supplies, paper, all of those types of things. Um, our curriculum and testing materials, so you just heard Dr. Afferman talk about our new reading program, that may have a marginal cost there. Um, and then that one classroom teacher, uh, reduction based on choice, so, taking a look at that, we were able to kind of figure out what per people cost would be, um, for these variable costs, divided amongst our entire student enrollment, so you can see, those variable costs, it's about a hundred and fifty three dollars per student. When you take a look at the top of the sheet here, there is these six costs, so things that don't necessarily change based on our student enrollment. Um, majority of our actual staff, um, as I mentioned previously, we would still have school nurses, we would still have physical education teachers, art teachers. Um, the administrative costs, when you think about our building principles, our central office, administrative assistance, or legal fees, all of those things are, um, pretty much expected and fixed, the, uh, cost to, um, operate and maintain our building, utilities, uh, transportation, that is our current number for FY twenty four. Um, and then professional development for our staff, which in most cases is a contractual obligation. And then when you look at networking, that is, um, not professional networking, but our networking systems for our technology, um, and wireless services. Um, so when we take a look at this number, it is definitely lower than the five thousand dollar cost that we get per student, um, from choice, and a lot of that obviously goes to offset some of the fixed costs that we already have. In terms of the special education, um, breakdown, as you can see, um, Casey and Christine and Alex, um, gave you an example of, of each, of a student in each of our schools. Um, and to make sure that we're protecting our students' privacy, we just gave you some details about the services that they require. Um, and we talked about what the reimbursement rate is, those reimbursement rates that we're receiving are in the yellow, and then what the actual cost to Norton is, is in the purple. I think it's important for us to note that those costs that are in purple are regardless if we have a school choice student and those groupings are not. Um, every single one of these situations, um, has students that are in a small group, or, um, in, in a group with at least four, three or four other students, so there's a four, five students in the group, um, which means that in almost all cases, the groups would exist with or without those school choice students. So when you take a look, you can see, um, that the first student example, we're saying that, you know, what we, what the cost, quote unquote, cost was versus the reimbursement, we're still ahead by about six hundred and eighty dollars. That number is actually not the accurate number, because those costs would have been maintained regardless if that student was in there or not. To actually getting the, the reimbursement there.
Can I just break it real quick, cause?
Yeah.
Uh, it, it, it's semantics, but maybe it's not, so. Do I have to explain how I look at this?
Please.
So, the purple is actually not the cost, but that's, that's not the correct way to look at this. Um, the way you want to look at this is you want to actually look at it backwards. So, I'll take one that's in, that's, that comes up as a, um, reimbursement, reimbursement versus cost negative for us, the L G N student. If you look at the L G N student, it's a group of four people. The reimbursement rate now is three thousand, one hundred and ninety nine dollars and fifty cents. The N P S teacher's hourly rate is seventy nine, twenty three times a hundred and eighty hours. That is a fixed cost, because we will have three students in that in any case. So, the cost to us is not three thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars and thirty three cents per student, it's that number, that seventy nine, it's the, the three thousand, five hundred and sixty five times, whatever it is, like that's, that's what that number is. The way you want to look at this is say, okay, we're gonna have to have that teacher in place anyways, that number. And the question is, do we want to have it with or without the three thousand, one hundred and ninety nine dollars and fifty cents of reimbursement? So, the things that look like a negative down here, that's actually, that's actually not correct. Now, there's a different conversation with Justin, and, and this is one I had with, with Daniel, and that was, if we have three instead of four, you know, is, is the fourth student somehow detracting from the group? And, and, and maybe, if you want to talk about it, like, he basically said, no, in fact, it's probably better to have fourth student in there, and maybe even fifth. I don't know enough about how these groups work, I don't know the dynamic of it, do you want to talk about that?
I mean, it really depends upon the group and, and dynamics of the kiddos that are in it, the staff that are there. Um, oftentimes, if it's like a, a counseling group, having four is, is much better than having two or three, because there's more voices and more opinions to be backed off of each other. If it's a more intensive speech or O T session, it's actually more challenging when there's that four in there, but there's oftentimes a professional or someone else to help support that situation. So we try to be cognizant of grouping students when we're doing that, um, and trying to make sure that it is the most, um, effective and appropriate setting for both staff and students to make a a, a, a session that's going to gain progress and not detract from anyone. So I mean, it's, it's four, but it's kind of a ballpark as to what that would actually look like, depending on the case of.
So, and as a conversation, we can keep adding, uh, but with respect to the finances of it, this, I don't know if this is representative of pretty much everything, but it would seem that, because not only there are not individuals who are getting one-on-one service, most of them we can look at and say, okay, financially, it actually is, is, uh, is better for us to do it, because.
So we wanted to show you different, we want to show you different scenarios to show that it, it is variable. Every single student, if we were to sit down and do this with every single one of our, our students that fall into this category, you would see these numbers fluctuate in every single scenario, but ultimately, it's a cost positive for us, because we are bringing in funds that we would not have if these students were not here and not in these groups. Um, so, similar to the conversation that we had about the classroom position, um, it, there's really not a lot of opportunity for us to reduce staff if we didn't have the school choice component, um, because it's, they're spaced out in a way that these groups would still happen, um, the majority of the time. When you actually go in, you actually look at the dynamics of the group, it's almost always one choice student with three or four Norton students, and it, you know, and other times that'd be two choice students with two Norton students. It really just depends on the particular dynamics of that grade level, those service credits, and everything else that comes with it. Um, but to Dan's point, those groups would be happening whether or not we're getting the reimbursement of thirty eight hundred dollars or not.
I just have, oh, sorry.
Well, there's just, there's two things I wanted to bring up, one's a question, one's a comment. Going back to the first sheet, I think it's important to note on the technology, the hardware, a lot of the technology and hardware opportunities all of our students have is from the school choice members, so I think that's a, that's a positive conversation to have. We'd be in a lot more dire straits if we didn't have the school choice expended appropriately towards technology. Um, the second part, and, and this is just more of a question, when you look at these hourly rates, if, and I don't know, this, this could be you answered, Casey or Jen, if we lose, say, a teacher that's been here twenty five years and hire somebody in theory for a lower cost as a newer teacher, is that rate conditional?
Totally different.
Okay.
The rate's totally different, so, when we were going through this process and seeing Alex Ford sitting down yesterday, and I, even, we were all sitting in the conference room together, you're like, okay, so who is this staff person, you're like, oh, that person's been here for thirty years. The number's gonna be different than this person who just started last year, like, so there, it's constantly changing, and that's why every single one of these scenarios is so different. And, uh, Gina, I just want to piggyback on what you talked about with the technology piece. Um, I think it's important for people to know that all of our curriculum funds for the last several years, including the upcoming projected budget, all of that is funded through school choice, all of our supply money comes through school choice. Um, all of our technology comes from school choice as well, we do not have any room within our regular budget for those purchases, and it's, um, that's something that, over the years, when budgets starting to get a little bit worse, I know, you know, Joe said it for a number of years, we're coming to the edge of the cliff. When we were told that we needed to cut things, we moved a lot of things into school choice in order to maintain that level of service that we, that we want to provide for our students. Um, and unfortunately.
The well's dry.
The well's dry, and, and, you know, losing that money also means you're losing.
I mean, going back probably three or four years, uh, you know, Dr. Vieta had, had floated a suggestion of tying some salaries to school choice so that it would, people would be driven to continue with school choice, like, i.e., his salary could be contingent on school choice, or something of that nature, and we, we decided that probably wasn't the best use, or, you know, things like that, cause, you know, you don't want to get into, as, as like, we don't want to pay salaries with this.
And unfortunately, over those last few years, that has happened. You know, there are salaries that are in school choice, because we were not able to sustain them within the regular budget. And that, that's the concern that I have, as I know you all have as well, but, um, I know Justin has questions too, but I just want to.
Uh, so I just have the, um, enrollment, oh yes, I haven't gotten to that yet, this is from nowhere, so. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, um, so you're saying the only teacher you could eliminate is from grade three, because there's thirteen school choice kids?
Mm-hmm.
At the base, essentially, yeah.
Right, right.
Um, so I guess when I look at this though, I see grade four has fifteen school choice kids and grade five has twenty one. So why couldn't you eliminate a teacher from each of those?
So the grade four, um, is fifteen divided among seven classrooms. So it's one, it's two students per classroom, versus J C S only has five. So it's a little bit more per, per classroom.
Would you have to?
I'm sorry, the grade four is divided by eight. Um, divided by eight classrooms, so it's one more two students per classroom.
So if you cut the teacher, the numbers would go up in the other separate classes.
So it's just because the Yale school has a greater number of sections, because of all of our fourth and fifth grades together, versus J C S has X amount of classrooms and L G N has X amount of classrooms. If J C S and L G N were a combined, either two, either three school, those numbers would be different, like, grade three at J C S has fourteen, grade three at L G N has ten, that's, that's a classroom, that's twenty four kids. But because they're not together in the same building, doesn't work. That makes sense, Justin?
It doesn't fit that, no, and I guess I'm just not, I don't, I just, I feel like you're, I'm sorry.
No, and, and so, I mean, ultimately, amongst each classroom, it would be one or two students, so cutting, you know, fifteen off of two hundred, you might have to get one eighty five.
I guess the easy way to look at it is if you had a hundred, to make it simple, if you had a hundred and fifty. I guess the easy way to look at it is if you had a hundred, to make it simple, if you had a hundred and fifty students in a grade level, divided by, I said ten, so it's easy, that's fifteen kids in each class. If you, I guess hypothetically, but if you had fifteen kids in each class and you had fifteen school choice, you'd be then cut.
Absolutely.
But what you really need to do is take how many kids are in each, each grade level and then divide it by how many classes we have. And whatever that number is would be, okay, which is, we're usually around one, 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 two, any other class. Uh, and I'll speak my own kids, my own kids are twenty and twenty-one, yeah, first and second grade. So if we have first and second grade, then we have nine and five. That, that ain't gonna work unless we're gonna add kids to it, you know? Basically, take those eleven kids and sub them out and put two kids in each other classroom, now you can save on a teacher. It might increase class size. Right? So that, yeah, but the assumption you're making is that we're fine increasing class sizes. So, yeah, you can, you can do that, but then by the same token, I would say, well, then why don't we just cut two teachers and, and increase the class sizes even more, or we call three and, so there's, there, there comes a, there's, there's an inflection point on, on students in the classroom. Where we say, okay, above and beyond this now, we're actually deteriorating the corrupting level of education for the Norton kids. So I think probably maybe an easier way to look at this, just to save time on the conversation is, cut a teacher from every single grade. At sixty-eight thousand, divide it by the two hundred forty-six students we have, that's three thousand three hundred seventeen dollars of cost. So we'll call it thirty-five hundred, just to say the argument, it's not that, let's call it that. So it's fifteen hundred dollars in profit on each kid. Sorry to call it profit, but it is profit. I'm not saying kids are, but I think those two, two things we gotta also remember here. One, this, uh, we have real five examples. That's two hundred thirty-nine that we don't know. In terms of what I mean. I understand, but if you just took the however many are in special and then did this whole thing, but, I don't know, let's say it's sixty. We should see sixty of these, because these five are just randomly picked, whether they're picked in a favor or a map, who knows, you know? Two, so it's, and I think a bigger piece to your thing is, you thought we were being reimbursed all over the dollar. Clearly we're not. No, I was serious about that. And that was, that was what you, for me, that was what brought this conversation was correct. I was under impression A and it was B, correct. That being said, looking at this, I'm, I'm much more comfortable with it because, again, the reimbursement in, in the small groups and, and you are right that we are seeing, um, some limited examples here. And I don't know if, I, I don't know how much it would be to see more. And this is one of the reasons I actually said I, I wanted to weigh the vote. I think I told you guys, like, we, we got the original numbers, which we're not for twenty-four hours for the vote, it's not enough time to go through this. I think we need time to process, it's time to ask questions. People may have questions they want to ask offline of Janet, Christine, um, and Casey. So, you know, but, but again, if, if, if I look at it and I go backwards and say, okay, in a group of four, we would have, you know, this, this teacher, no matter what, do we want the reimbursement or not? I always, always will take the reimbursement. It's not a ton of money, but it's, but I think there's another piece of this, which obviously I, I like data and I like numbers in terms of, you know, what we're trying to do here, especially with the budget cost. But there's also a big factor of immeasurable cost here. And you can never quantify where it is big. Teacher student ratio is one, you take two hundred and forty-six kids out, that's removing a ratio, teacher, see, ratio's gone down, that's always a good thing. Two burnout of our teachers in terms of, you know, there, they go from twenty-two kids in that classroom and you took two or three kids out, now they're down to nineteen and eighteen, that's a good thing, that's less, especially at the elementary levels. Obviously, from, from what we just talked about, four kids in a group compared to three kids in a group, I'm sure this situations, I would say probably eighty percent of those times, a smaller group in a, in a special education classroom is probably better. You know, one on, just do it simple. If you have three kids instead of four kids in a room, twenty-five percent of the, the teacher's attention's going to one kid. Hey, if there's only three kids in that room, gives taxpayer money, thirty-three percent, that's better for our kids, you know? So the last one, last one, behaviors, we've seen this issue. Behaviors all across country, not just in Miami, it's of, especially on a middle school level, you know? And again, I'm not saying the school choice kids are the bad kids. I'm just saying, we're adding twenty-one, twenty in grade seven, twenty-one. We're adding sixty-two kids to our middle. Let's just say, ten of those kids are behaviors. That's ten more kids we're dealing with at a behavioral level that is taxing our vice principal, principal, um, Dr. Rivas, sat right here and said to us with the police stuff. Saying it's just school choice, however, he did say, middle school's been a nightmare in terms of this year and the behavior issues we have. We're adding additional things that we'll never be able to quantify and add by having a school choice program to add at this size, in my opinion. So you're right about the, if we took all these kids out, the class sizes would go down and that's an immeasurable, except you're forgetting the, the biggest problem with that is, if we take all these kids out, what's our current take from? Let's say that we did, because I think it's important, because he's, he's making a point. One point six, so one point six million, you know, at this point, you know, we're, we're cutting a massive number of, of positions right now. So if you take that one point, we could actually take the kids out, you also have to take the one point six million dollars out. So the teacher ratio is actually worse, because we're gonna have to lay off another back of the napkin twenty-one teachers. So it's, you, you don't have a luxury of taking them out and keeping them alive. No, we don't, but I'm saying, I'm saying, you're saying it's an immeasurable, but I'm saying, the immeasurable actually is, is, is not a, a negative like you think it is, I think it's actually a positive. Because we would actually have worse numbers if we didn't have these kids and didn't have the revenue.
Us take out the one point, like I said, take out the one point six out of the budget too.
Right, take the one point, that's what I'm saying, take one point six out. You have to fire all the teachers that have one point six million pays. Yes, so your, 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 your classroom sizes are gonna go up. If, no. It's hard to say that though. It's hard to say that, because that's by thinking, you know, there are teachers, there's only twelve grades. I mean, it's at least a teacher from every grade you have to cut. If you're not doing that, you're not taking all these kids out. We're looking at school choice from the standpoint, these kids are here, these kids are here. This would be a phased out approach of call it, and yours. That's what I'm saying. So yes, are you taking one point six million dollars? Every year we vote on it. If we, hypothetically, if we ended school choice right now, two hundred and forty-six kids aren't leaving. Are, are we gonna lose some because of our, our budget situation? Are we gonna lose some people moving on, whatever, and then we're not gonna bring them in? We're gonna lose fourteen kids automatically because they're out, you know, so that number's already down to two thirty-two, if you would. If everyone stays, next year we'd have two thirty-two. The following year we'd lose eighteen more. So it would be phased out approach. So now when you're looking at those numbers, it's not one point six million dollars this year. It's one point six million dollars spread out over the ten.
I'm still not sure why you have to phase one point six million dollars at a time. Revenue, I don't understand that.
Because I, because, I wanna, I, I, what I would like to do, and I'm not saying get rid of school choice entirely, I'm a big school choice fan. However, in order to do it, in order to make the, make what Norton should be in terms of like, we always say, what do we want Norton to be? How do we get there? Why are we dumping in more money? And, and doing a school choice aspect when we're not being reimbursed for what, what we're putting in? We, we see it, we, we are though.
We're not negative, you're still have the twenty-three hundred dollars. So if you take the twenty-three ninety-nine, subtract the two oh three. Twenty-one hundred dollars.
So you're telling me to educate this student norm is one hundred and fifty-three dollars?
Just those variables. So that has nothing to do with staffing, that has nothing to do with, all of the other components are off the top. Like, we didn't include athletics that we paid for, we didn't include other things there.
So now, now if you add these numbers again together and did, like you said about the JCS and LG, take those two. I'm looking seven, eight, ten years down the road, if we ever did combine those schools, that is not another option. That, we are now cut, we would start, we would start seeing the phased process.
What I think we would really need to do if we wanted to phase things out, and I do want to talk to you guys about my recommendations tonight as well. Um, what we would need to do is figure out how are we making up whatever we're phasing out each year, right? So because we do not have any flexibility within the budget to account for any loss of revenue. Um, because it was different five years ago when we were not paying salaries with school choice. When we were paying for the extra, like, nice-to-have stuff. That's not the case anymore. So if we were to phase out whatever it was over time, we are really going to need to be continuing to look at, how are we getting that money back then?
I think school choice is, I think it can be a great thing for a district. But I think when we're looking at, like we referred all year about the special education, the behaviors are increasing at a younger age, when we look at the overall piece, I, I think we just have to be very specific on numbers and, um, and where we're going to accept it and how many, like, where's the cost benefit and where is there not a cost benefit? And looking at the, the immeasurable, as Nick says, but kind of qualitative piece to it, and then also looking at the numbers. Like, there's gotta be a balance in between. I don't think that we can just be like, yeah, let's just take everybody in that, you know, I mean, we never really are denying kids because it's worked.
Well, you can deny, you can deny it at a point of, we can only fit five kids in this grade. You know, and like, and I think we need to like really look and hone in on those specific numbers. That obviously you can't deny a kid that's applying for, if they have, you know, but unless they have very specific classroom needs that we can't accommodate for, obviously.
I, I just wanted to just clarify, like, the, the numbers that are on that sheet with the five students that are there, that's not, that's not including the general, like, six thousand dollars that we get for them. So that's an over and above money that's either costing us or being reimbursed for. The four in the small group setting is the state number that is, is aligned for small group. Um, it's not our number. So when they give us small group, it's kind of like, that's how they are defining a small group, is four and under. Ours typically are two or three. They're really not at four, because it's not best practice for a lot of kids. I mean, that's really where, what small group is defined as and how we break it down. Um, and in terms of like the reimbursement for special education staff, again, those numbers are, I mean, our spreadsheets are moving down by our staff, but those are again, state rates that are set for each of those things. We've been working really hard over the past couple of years to redefine our service of reference and our IP's so that we're maximizing our money that we're getting back for school choice. So a lot of times, so previously years, like we had general teach, general teacher para or special education teacher versus reading specialist. We get a higher reimbursement rate for reading specialists. We're making sure that, that our team chairs are, are itemizing in an individual session or a small group or large group because those numbers are reflective of the costs that we get reimbursed as well. So I mean, that's something that, that, um, that Christine actually and, and Alex really taught us. Um, because we didn't realize that in terms of the reimbursement piece. So we've been really working towards, um, maximizing all, all of those pieces. But I just want to say, like, I know that we're focusing on some of the negative pieces of school choice with the special education, the behaviors and the numbers and things along those lines, but I also want to point out that we've got a lot of really, really positive students that have come out of our school choice. We've got amazing kids who are wearing DECA and doing amazing, and doing wonderful, wonderful things that are amazing peer models for our students that have come to join our sports teams at high school and have really made them what they are. And having kids that want to come here and want to play Norton sports and not want to leave to go to other schools and things along those lines. So I think that we, like, you're talking about the immeasurables of the negative impacts, but there's also the immeasurables of the positive things that come out of it as well. And the experiences that kids are getting, you know, we've got quite a few diverse students that have come in through school choice that our Norton students may or may not have experienced. And it brings a positive, more inclusive community into what we have going on right now. So I just wanted to make sure that while, while we're looking at negative measurable, that we're also looking at the positive impact as well.
I think that's a good point, because I, I guess somewhere along the way, I, I'm confused about how we, this turned negative about school choice. I don't know how that, I, I don't know how we flipped that, or how it became like special ed and school choice and it became like kind of this, this negative. I'm not sure how we got there.
I just, I just, you say we make one point six million dollars off of school choice. That's not real, because we're not taking out the cost of what we're doing. But we are getting a check for one point six million, and I think that's the bottom line of what school choice is. Yes, but, but we have two hundred and forty-six kids that we have to service one way or another. So that, that actually is, we don't, if we don't have school choice. The math is around me here, not, not school choice. Yeah, I don't understand, like, if, if there's a, if there's a mistake in the math, point it out, but I mean, I don't, like, um, the intangibles, I'm not really sure, like, what we're supposed to do with, with something we can't measure by definition, like, I, I get what you're saying. If, if we think that school choice is, is inherently bad and does not suit our students, our students, Norton students' needs, then that's a different conversation than that. I thought this was originally because you were not convinced that we were, it, we did, this was a positive monetary program for us. I understand, but like you, uh, even with this, what I have, you're not, you're not telling me how much money we're making.
So if we take a hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Minus a hundred and fifty-three, seventy-one is, is, I, I call it back of the napkin, because you can't, even these numbers, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that these numbers are, are even accurate, but I mean, that's a back of the napkin kind of, we're making five thousand minus one hundred and fifty-three dollars, you say, oh, that's not, for example, technology, forty-one dollars. We get iPads or Chromebooks for forty-one dollars.
Well, when you take a look at, you know, five years, we get.
If you, if you bring in Chromebooks and Chromebooks for forty-one dollars, you're absolutely stupid.
It's spread over the district. It's spread over the five years.
If we don't have school choice, we don't even, we can't even have that discussion, the school choice broadside. And, and one thing I want to touch on with Casey, the positive impact, I believe it was three years ago, the valedictorian from Norton High School.
And he went to Dartmouth.
I'm not saying it's not positive, school choice. I'm a huge, I, trust me, I'm a huge school choice fan. My issue has become that I just don't think it's nearly as profitable to what we're saying it is. So that's me, and again, I don't, this hasn't proven my point to say, hey, this is actually. Yeah, can I just say, I guess I would say, despite our way, I guess tell us how you want to measure it then, because we measured it, but the right way, and you're saying that's, that doesn't really measure, it's not, not correct. So I guess the point you need to figure out, these two hundred and forty-six kids, how many are in general, how many are in special, and break them down. You cannot tell me we spend seventeen thousand dollars per pupil in Norton. And then for a hundred and fifty-three dollars, variable cost, we can educate. So we don't spend seventeen thousand per pupil unless you stick our entire budget into buying our students.
Correct.
That is not the way to do it. Go out, go out and take, whatever, any ten random kids and move them out of town tomorrow. And tell me how much money we saved. The number is zero. It's not a per kid expense. It doesn't work that way. That's not how a, a budget operates. So you, you have to figure out, okay, is there a incremental cost to that one kid being in here? And that's what these numbers are. These numbers are basically saying, this is what that cost is. And we get five thousand, is the five thousand too low? Yeah, I, I, you know, I both agree on that, and it, it should be much, much higher than that. But, so why though?
I mean, another.
Five thousand, well, because it's been five thousand for whatever, seventeen years. Meanwhile, the, the number for, what do you call it, the charter schools, do that every damn year. Why shouldn't we have the same luxury as them?
Okay, then, then that's my question. Why are we asking the state for more money? If you're telling me we don't need more money, you say.
Nobody's saying we don't need more money.
Nobody ever said.
You're making up, you're making up statements. Time out, we were all agreement when I reached out to our state reps, that school choice money should go high. It should. So why are we asking for more school choice money if we don't actually need more school choice money?
Who said we don't?
First of all, the five thousand dollars. No, 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 you're, you're conflating two different things. You're conflating it is net profitable for us and the five thousand per year over the past seventeen years is somehow a fair number. Those two are mutually exclusive.
I think we, we were more concerned with the disparity of our school choice reimbursement versus, say, like, the virtual high school.
You know, the vote goes up, everything else goes up. Why isn't our one revenue source going up? Our revenue source should go up as well. That's, and, and we all agree on that. I mean, I think you're a hundred percent right on that. But, but that is, that is not the same issue as whether or not school choice is, is that positive or negative.
But it's just special ed reimbursement, it's only kids that are on IEP. So if a student is getting like RTI services, we don't get reimbursed for that, correct? If that's still at five thousand.
What's our check?
RTI is a student, well, I mean, somebody else can explain it, but it's a student that, um, maybe got screened for OT, for example, and they were picked up for, I don't know, six sessions, eight sessions, twelve sessions where the OT or COTA works with them, maybe in a small group, maybe one-on-one, just to give them a little additional support over, um, certain money.
I, I think so, while they're working with a reading specialist. Um, I, I have to say, Justin, we really don't have the extra staff to OT, RTI. Right, because there are definitely kids who could use it, but we just. It's small pieces, right? So it's not a huge amount, but, um, I, I think, so my.
It's small pieces, right? So it's not a huge amount, but um, I, I think, so my recommendation to the committee tonight is for us to not accept any new students in K to six for next year. Because of the fact that we are looking at a really significant budget deficit, we have, are pulling back some of our supports for next year, which looks at our reading interventionist, our math interventionist. Our coaches are gone. So I really feel that next year we should really maybe pause on K to six. I am recommending that we could do an additional five students in each grade seven to ten. I'm also, one of the things that we've always done is that if a student, uh, uh, is a school choice here and they're a student and they have a younger sibling. We wanna make sure we're keeping families together, so that would be.
Can I ask you a question? When you say an additional, are we at max at all those grades now?
At seven to ten?
Yeah.
No, I think we probably still have a little bit of wiggle room only because of just the way that we're able to spread students.
No, 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 I'm saying, I'm saying, do we have? The number we are currently at, do we have that many students enrolled? You're, you're what, you wanna add?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Do an additional five students, let's say.
We, we could.
In grade whatever, seven?
Seven, yeah.
So seven, let's just say.
That's twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-one is our, is our cap right now?
Twenty-one is how many we have enrolled currently. It's not a cap.
Do we have a cap on it right now?
There have, were, have been no.
So you have a good cap on.
So I'm saying, we can take five more. Not, not have it wide open. And the reason I'm not advocating for a wide open is because I think with our budget issues, we have to, we have to be thoughtful about what we're doing here. Um, in terms of elementary students, it would only be if they have a sibling that's already enrolled in school choice and they're coming up. Um, last year, we brought in twenty new kindergarteners across the two buildings. That's, that's a lot of kids. Um, and the other thing I would ask the committee to consider would be allowing our J, our, um, J staff. Um, allowing our NPS staff to bring their children um into school choice that they so chose. Um, it's actually a really, it's a benefit for both sides. It helps us keep staff here in district, and it's a benefit to their families too.
So.
And we don't get a lot of benefits as educators.
Two questions, um.
Yes, yeah.
Um, do we not allow new school choice in eleven or is it just based on the number that you're not? I know it's, we don't allow seniors.
We don't allow seniors. We typically don't allow grade eleven either. We kind of get to grade ten and we feel like sometimes if you're leaving a senior, senior or high school, it's for a reason and um.
Yeah. So secondly, with the staff exception to your proposal. So if it's like a staff with like a second grader, one, like a one out of ten.
Yes, and, and typically, I mean, I have um a staff member that their daughter is coming to kindergarten and we've been doing choice for so many years and she said to me, um, do you have any idea what's going to happen? Like, this has always been our plan. I said, well, we'll talk about it, but it is my recommendation that staff will be continued to, um.
So the exceptions at the elementary level are legacy siblings and staff.
That would be my recommendation.
I, I still don't think we should go over this tonight, cause I, I'm not sure Nick is comfortable with it. Um, I'm not just him, is or not, but I think there's still questions, is my guess.
I just had a quick one, just about it. So um, if we were to do the seven to ten, let's say um in grade seven, they decided they're not gonna send their kids. So now that drops down to twenty. So now, like, are we gonna cap it at like, for grade seven, it's twenty-one plus five would be twenty-six? Is that the cap? Or like if a.
That's a good question. You know, I had a thought about that, honestly, Justine, um. I mean.
I guess the other question.
I don't know how many seventh graders we'll have, but I think as long as you don't go over that twenty-six number, I would be comfortable.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Like, you know what I mean? Like, if a student is like, oh, I was school choice, but I'm gonna go back to my hometown.
Yeah, no, I just, I honestly had a thought about it, but thank you.
I guess my question on that, and, and Justine, I can think of it, um, and I just lost it.
Plus five. Kids on plus five on current number, yeah, basically, right? I'll come back to you.
So, so the legacy, that's anyone who's currently in and or has a sibling in. So if you're a second grader who's school choice in and then you have a kindergarten. Come and take them.
Yeah, to keep families together.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And then Norton public school teachers, staff. Is there, if you're paid by Norton Public Schools, you're in, is it a full-time role? Is it part-time? Is it nurses, admin, everybody?
Norton Public Schools staff.
Teacher, teacher?
No. That's not a full-time position.
So it has to be full-time?
You have to be a, an actual employee.
Right. Did you, did you mention, yeah, maybe I said this, I couldn't hear you, but um, we've also all, uh, historically allowed families that moved out.
Yes.
Did you mention that? Okay.
Um, I didn't mention it, but no. Um, so typically what happens during the course of the year, if a family leaves Norton. Um, they are able to um, move over to be a choice family. And a lot of times, um families do that just for the end of the year, and then other times families want to stay and so we're down a number of families over the year. Yeah, and actually, I mean, we had a couple of situations this year too, that would allow them to stay.
So how do we, I guess from a law standpoint, how do we, isn't that kind of favoring people or not? We can just tell them, there are enough people out?
Well, so.
Are we selecting at that point?
Technically, no, because they are already here. So it's, we're not telling somebody from the outside, they can't attend. We're just allowing someone to stay. Um, so what we, so basically what we would do in terms of, of, we have to send this to um, DSC by June first. So we would say it is, school choice is closed in K to five unless these two situations, K to six, excuse me, and then seven to ten, this many spots, and then eleven, all those books.
And how does our selection process work right now?
First form first, sir. Um, so what happens is um, previously, Dr. Byetta and myself, we meet with every single school choice family. We bring them in, we have conversations about why, why they wanna come to Norton. We talk about grades, we talk about attendance, we talk about the expectation of getting your child to and from school, because we do not provide transportation. Um, if the student has an IEP, it goes to Casey. Casey reviews the IEP. And there have been cases where we've had to say, you know, I'm really sorry, we're not able to, you know, fulfill the needs of your child's IEP here or our program is at capacity. And those are the, really the only cases that we can, they know, um, or unless there's a felony charge.
So I, remember my question?
Yeah.
Year over year, do you get notified by school? I know they don't have to reapply. But today, out of a courtesy, saying, yes, we're coming back. No, so like, we're saying there's two hundred and forty-five kids. Five of them could say, say nothing, and now we only know it's two forty.
No, so what they, I mean, if they decide they weren't coming back, they would unenroll, um, because they need their school records to be sent to.
That would likely be their district.
Or wherever they're gonna go, right? So um, that's typically how we find out. But it's just like any of our Norton families, they can pick up and move tomorrow and sometimes they tell us and.
To them, yeah.
But, yeah.
Anybody have any other questions? Do you guys think you wanna hold on this for a little bit?
Uh, I mean, yeah, I, I don't, no, I can vote.
Okay. You can?
Yeah, they're, they're always comfortable with it. Fine, they're, you have to agree, but I mean, if you feel like you have good data and still offering the recommendations, if you shall.
Yeah.
And you, and you're comfortable with the data and so, I mean, that's okay, I don't need to wait. But I mean, yeah, like, am I comfortable with the data? No, but I don't think I'll ever be comfortable with the data unless if I. What, what are the comparable, I just started speaking about? Is if you kind of think about this a little, in a di- a little bit of a different way that, I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing it out there. But if you look at like the eighth graders that don't come here for high school. It's similar to the conversation you brought up earlier. We're still not shutting down classrooms and we lose thirty kids to other, you know, the southeastern Bristol County. So it's, it's kind of that same thought process is, we're still not shutting down, you know, a freshman class. Or we're not getting rid of a freshman teacher, but we're still losing, bought thirty kids to others.
Yes, but it would be a better example, to me, cause at that point, you're starting to go to different classes, you're going to different teachers anyway. It would be like saying that for second grade, going to the third grade, you lose thirty kids. You wouldn't be able to lose a third grade.
Say like every freshman has.
I have a lot of times about weddings, it's like, we lost thirty kids.
That's what, right, it's still coming, yeah. It's business, it's, it's a little bit.
All right, so if they don't have any other questions, do you have a motion to approve um, the school choice recommendations as written?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a written, um, it's on the.
Yeah, you do, it's in the, it's in the packet.
Yeah, I guess the motion would be, let me read through it real quick. So the motion would be.
In paragraphs, right?
Would be for fiscal year twenty-five, school choice enrollments would be limited to grade seven through ten. New, new.
I, I would just wanna add. Here, here's my thing though. If we get like seven, like, I'm not gonna say to two people, no, like, I, I think there needs to be a little flexibility, like, we're anticipating five, but like if seven show up and like a, like a set of twins shows up or something like. We don't, we don't have a, we don't have a cap. There's no magic number, but, yeah, but like, we don't, we don't technically have a cap, or, or we do have a cap. You're not gonna go and let in, it's seventy, grade seven, yes. You know, we, we just don't say, well, I'll take it, so we're kind of like, we're gonna add five. That would be twenty-six. We have twins coming in, we would say, yeah, twenty-seven is good. Like if number five is the older twin and number six is.
The gold twin.
Well, is it older?
I, I think, it's just one of those things that, it, the goal is to increase a little bit.
Yes.
To not go fifteen extra kids and twenty-nine.
Seven to ten, we, we don't see all the seven, ten kids show up. It, it's, it's, you know, perfect.
One of those apartments.
I know, right? Not so much.
I know, be school choice, but there might be seven or ten new kids showing up.
Well, and that's residential, so that is something out of our hands, so.
All right, so we're back to the motion.
So, I'll be honest with you, yeah. I, I motion to approve the, um, the school choice, um as written with the, um, with the addition of allowing our transport students to remain in the district.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
All those in favor? All right, so discussion and vote.
Casey, please, please work on this too, by the way.
Yeah, please, thank you. Interesting, Rob. Um, so what you have to find you is similar to what we've seen before, um, when there, there is the fees that we discussed. Um. So we, we typically were giving you recommendations before when we were discussing um, some of our reductions on the, I didn't do yellow, just so that you had an idea of where the numbers that we came from when we met together. And um, the other ones, if you have any questions, are just different increases. So typically, we were doing a fifty-dollar increase, um, and then there was an option of a hundred, but and then um, coffee was one of ones that was a little bit different, it'd be um, fifty dollars in the face.
So. Um, I, I have a couple of questions, those are, the I guess my first thought would be if we went to a hundred on sports, just the general fee and a hundred on transportation. That's already four thousand dollars of impact. I mean, that's at least one position we could keep, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's it. I don't know how we're not doing that quite honestly right now. And, 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 and I'll tell you right now, I paid both of those fees. So it's not something that, um, you know, I'm gonna have to pay the money. But if we can, if we can keep a position, and I don't know why we wouldn't go up to a hundred on the.
Done before?
Yeah, I mean.
The only thing I wanna say is that, um, the number of staff that we have going now, that is based off the fifty, so it would be a full hundred.
So what, so what, sorry, so. We're actually being now.
Um, it, it's based with the twenty-nine staff members, it's based off these original items that we gave in the yellow with fifty dollars, so we're like, well, so another addition.
Yeah, so we're already projecting that we're gonna get fifty-two thousand back, or what are the twenty-six thousand they are, and then twenty-six thousand there. So already, we already are counting on the fact that we're getting fifty-two thousand. So moving it up to a hundred each would give us an extra fifty-two.
Okay, well, that's.
I mean, I, I just.
All right, so then, add the middle school athletics, uh, sports up to a hundred, that's another five thousand, I assume?
Yeah.
Right? So now we're at fifty-seven thousand. I think we have average teacher is sixty-eight, so. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, that's, I hate to say that, but I mean, I don't.
Speaking from a standpoint of, I, I completely understand what Dinesh is saying. There's another piece of me here. From a taxpayer's side, looking at the same way as, you told us you're gonna cut twenty-eight positions. We don't save a position. This is where the transparency piece comes in, of defining money, no increase fees. So to me, I think we should stick to our guns on what we said when we looked at all the cuts and through the executive, executive sessions with the unions and blah, 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 and stick to exactly what we said. One percent, if this is what we get from one percent, these are the positions that's happening, these are the increases in fees we do. Which would have been that fifty bucks. So fifty bucks for a high school sports. The only thing I didn't really understand was the middle school one, cause I had middle school, I had thirteen thousand five, three hundred and fifty over the one percent and not nine thousand. So these are, I guess, a little bit, but like, my pieces is, we kind of got to, hey, if we got zero percent, if we got one percent, we got four percent from the town. This is what we were looking to do. I think we stick to the exact same plan. We've had that plan in place in terms of what we're doing. This is what we're rolling with, we told you what we were doing, that's how we're gonna stick to it. And, and then when it all comes down in town meeting in two weeks or whatever it is, everyone knows this is exactly what we said we were going to do, and we did. Yeah, well, well, good with that. All right, you save me a hundred bucks.
That makes sense. I mean, sitting here for the past nine years. And, and I know Nick and Justine, you guys knew the other three, we've, we've been trying to reduce or eliminate fees for years.
Right.
And, and as much as, you know, Nick so eloquently stated, it's, it's a, it's maybe a, maybe a position, maybe two. But there's so many positions, what position takes that? Like, how do we even, it's just. And I, I would love to be able to save positions. I mean, I don't pay the transportation fee, I pay two sports fees. Unfortunately, you know, with my daughter's academic record, I'll be paying a lot of National Honor Society fees next year. Um, I, I paid, I paid a lot of extra fees this year. So I mean, it's I'm stuck between, you know, what Dinesh and, and Nick both just said, you know. Do we raise the fees to save a position? And it's just, it's, it's a tough pill to swallow because everyone's budget is, is taxed already. You know, and, and the last thing I would want is a hundred dollars could tax somebody out of participating. Or, and I can already hear when the bus fee goes up, one twenty-three is gonna be more traffic. I think it happens first of every school year. Um, can you have that many less kids because a hundred dollars could tax the budget away from transportation? Um. Yeah, I'd like to change it. Um, I'm, I'm gonna agree with you, yes. I, I, no, Nick, what you said makes a lot of sense, actually. Like, we, we said this. We said this is what's happened. We, we kind of gotta stick to the guns on that. I, I, I actually, I, so I uh, I guess it would be more for Christine. So Christine, we have originally thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. If we increase middle school fees. So I don't know if it's in between fifty and a hundred, that would need to do, but like that nine thousand's.
I understand what you're saying, I just, basically, so that, that extra amount was when Erin and myself were going, um, middle school sports. You're saving money on other, um, subscriptions and different things. That was the extra. So it had, that was added, but it wasn't the fee.
Got it. Okay, so, so the fee money, we basically cut additional things at the middle school sports level, to get to that thirteen.
That original thirteen, yeah, right.
Okay. So then, then, then if we did a fifty dollar increase across all athletics, high school and middle school for every single sport, with the one exception of hockey, which is the more expensive race. That would go to an extra hundred dollars. We would get to the numbers that we said we would, we wrote at one percent.
That's fair.
Which is thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. In the middle, middle and high school clubs. I'm, I'm not fully understanding exactly what we're saying. So we're saying, we charge them fifty now and.
Is it two hundred dollar cap?
And we're saying no cap with fifty.
Yeah. So the rate stays the same?
Um, and just, it's after paying for every club?
And then, that number, we had originally of sixteen thousand dollars. That's with a cap of a two hundred dollar cap, this number would now be. Uh, sixteen eight. Plus all the additional money, so that, what I'm saying is with the clubs. We're not doing what we said. We're actually, we're bringing more money.
With the clubs, we're getting rid of the cap. And it's very variable because it's hard to track all, um, we're pretty much just backed into all the kids that are at cap. Off of spreadsheets in the middle school and, um, high school. And if they were to pay fifty for their max. This was the extra money that we would then get to then offset the budget on the club speed.
So, like, middle school drama is a great example of this, because. Um, by the time middle school drama rolls around, it's like late winter, early spring, kids have. Nine times out of ten, already reached their max to be here, and we have like a hundred kids that do. Middle school drama, so that's something that we're not really bringing in any B on that particular area. Um, it's, it is harder to, cuz you. It's harder to know what kids are gonna sign up for, so it's a little more variable.
Yeah, so I, so I guess to my standpoint then, is we, we were gonna offset sixteen thousand dollars worth. With a one percent increase. The closest number we get to that would be doing a fifty dollar no cap fee. Fourteen thousand dollars. And like you said, it is variable, so it's, we set sixteen, but.
Well, and, and that, that was seven, that would be eighteen, that, that was, I don't know, that was.
I think that number is.
As of that day.
Yes, I agree, totally agree. So, I guess for a club standpoint, again, going back to what we did, I would be more inclined to say. No cap. About fifty dollars every club you do, that gives us, we remember that. You're gonna have stuff to do with, with your anybody, you know. All, all the, 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 remove the cap, that's what we did. What, what, the sports activities, what is the current cap? Is it just on clubs or it's not on sports, right? Could we do without last year?
Yes.
So it's just clubs, without a cap, so now what we would do is we're removing the cap for clubs as well.
Yeah, so it's almost like the first step that we took with sports, yeah.
Yeah, fine, but. Yeah, agree.
Okay, anything else?
What about transportation? That's next, I'm not. Yeah, it's not the same sheet.
Yeah, same. Yeah, so we, and, and.
So.
Part safely prepared.
Yes, so, so the motion would be. To increase all high school and middle school athletic fees by fifty dollars per sport with no cap. With the exception of hockey, which would be increased a hundred dollars. And. Remove the cap from all clubs at the middle school and high school levels. Uh, and charge fifty dollars per club, and. Middle school wrestling is going to two hundred dollars. And middle school cross country is only two months, seventy five.
Correct.
Correct, cuz it would be.
Fifty, right.
Yes, that would still be a fifty dollar increase. So, yeah.
Covering the payment. I, I talked a little bunch of stuff.
So we didn't do, we didn't do transportation.
So the.
I think we have a second.
I think an easy way to put it is a fifty dollar increase for high school and middle school sports.
Hockey's a hundred.
Across the board, hockey's a hundred, clubs, we're removing the cap, each club you're a part of at the middle school or high school level is fifty dollars.
Yep, and middle school wrestling is two hundred and cross country is a hundred and seventy five.
That's correct.
Right, that's the motion.
Who made the motion?
Anybody made the motion?
I made the motion.
No, second, second, okay, all those in favor? Alright, thank you. Okay.
Wait a minute, no.
Are you in L?
So I'm in L, three, one, oh, sorry.
So four, one, four, was, sorry, Dad, I couldn't, I didn't see him, okay.
See, I'm, I'm curious, I, I don't wanna raise fees, I just, alright, it's just a call to morality clause, I just don't wanna raise. No, I, I don't, I was, I was curious, if someone. No, that was just, that was principle.
I don't want to do that. I guess lots of people want, so here we are. Alright, discussion abroad, transportation piece. Oh.
They said fifty bucks, maybe fifty bucks.
Yeah, we did it at fifty.
We said what we're gonna do with one percent, it's gonna be twenty six thousand dollars in transportation fees, which will require fifty dollar fees across all buses. And did we, did we look at, we looked at elimination?
Yes, it's an eighty three thousand dollar saving, um, because you're losing a hundred and thirty that we bring in, we still have to bring six graders here. So it's not as much of a savings, but it would definitely create a lot more traffic and chaos, so, so hard to believe, isn't it unbelievable?
Well, that, that would go against what we just talked about with splitting up families, cuz if you have a sixth grader, eighth grader at the same house, and you don't let the eighth grader run the bus, it's kinda ridiculous.
Well, and I, I, you know, you can almost guarantee the sixth grader's not gonna pay the fee either, cuz why bother, you have to bring.
Quite frankly, well, that would be a pretty sixth grader. I, do you know, if we did that, I mean, it's, uh. Yeah, I mean, I just think buses, bus fees in general to me, again, morality clause, I guess, is absolutely insane when you're funneling athletic, or maybe you get on the bus. You know, I, I mean, like, at the end of the day, if you're gonna tell me, hey, you gotta pick one or the other, I'm gonna pick, you gotta go to school on your, on your bus, and athletics is gonna be better, but. You know, so I wouldn't get into putting buses, I think, because it'd be exactly how we've done it, increase the fee by fifty bucks, and then here we go again. That's sounding old man, but I mean, I didn't pay any fees when I went to school, I, I'm just saying, I, this is.
Did you all, up, no?
I took my dinosaur back in the stone age. Took my T-Rex.
This is the most depressing meeting.
Oh, it was waiting.
Here we go, we have your reading program, I forgot that was on. We should go back to that in a moment. Alright, so transportation at fifty dollars?
So what?
So a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Alright.
Anyone opposed?
No, Dan's no, that's no.
See, I asked this time, Dan.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Hey, J C S principal search and selection of committee representatives.
Yes, so, uh, Dr. Marcus is, uh, moving on to his, his next step in, in, in his career. As such, we need to hire a principal for J C S, we're looking for a representative state called the group, which, uh, would also improve school committee membership. Um, the application, uh, excuse me, the posting for the position went out on April twelfth. It's gonna remain open through tomorrow, uh, end of business. We're looking to put together a team to start to review the, uh, applications. Schedule interviews the first week in May, then schedule finalist interviews, site visits, community forums, like that May fifteenth, sixteenth area. Followed a recommendation to, to Jen, uh, that I closed that week, and then hopefully, um. Get a, ask affirmation from the committee on the meeting on May twenty third.
We have applicants?
Right now, we have fifteen.
Wow, cool.
Any internal? Is it the same, is it the same process for internal, like, they just go to the, whatever you apply?
No internal care.
Okay. So tonight, you're looking for somebody to come to the school committee, is it on the committee?
Me- membership would be terrific.
Just testing you, we are just volunteering you for everything right now.
She volunteered herself, that's fine.
I did.
This one's.
I did, okay.
Volunteering called.
Yeah, you have littles, yeah, good fit.
Doesn't make sense for me or Dan.
No.
Oh, we're here, we're gonna be here next time.
Yeah, right. Alright, on that note, do we have other business?
Uh, I just wanna mention to the committee that we have been invited, um, or requested to attend the finance committee meeting on Monday night. To prevent our one percent budget to the committee, um. Christine is working on that recognition, um, it is, I, I, I. I'll be honest, I'm not really sure what else to do to prevent, so I, I think it's kind of confused, haven't we done this?
I know. Right, like, what are we doing?
A- and so, I, I mean.
I'm expecting you to say this as well, but I.
Perhaps, um, and I've shared a lot of that with you guys already, um, perhaps, so in that spirit, um, forty two staff members will be getting letters tomorrow. Um, twenty nine of them are, um. Cuts, like actual elimination of positions, but because of the way that, um, the whole process works, some of those letters will be transfer letters, some of them are, um.
Bumping.
Bumping, yeah, so like transfers, you, you're gonna be moving here, um, some people, we have like long-term subs that have a one-year contract, those letters will go out at the same time tomorrow. Um, we've literally spent the entire week going over and. Quadruple checking that we're doing this correctly and that the right people are getting.
How do people are held in the cup?
Um, in some cases, principals may have had a conversation with somebody and just say, hey, just wanted to give you a heads up. Um, but official letters are going out tomorrow across the district, all principals have everything they need.
Well, I've done a few, very sad, I know my position's down.
Well, and I think there are definitely some people that have, are, are looking at the writing on the wall, and as well, right? So that they understand, we've been very clear about the fact that we're trying to keep cuts away from, um, classrooms, especially elementary classrooms, so. Um, if you are in a position that is, you know, a little bit more.
So twenty nine, so the total number is twenty nine production and staff?
Yes.
What's the forty two number?
So that really means people who, um, are a senior staff member, the position they're in is no longer going to be there, but they're being transferred to somewhere else. Um, and then also, there are some staff members that are going to be getting, um, a reduction in, um, full-time status. So they may be going from a one point O down to a point eight or a point six, based on their role in the budget process.
So the forty two is just.
Just that I'm.
Twenty two positions with twenty nine.
Yeah, cuz it's very, it's, there's so much movement.
So, I do have a question, speaking a little bit. If we have a non-renewal. For whatever, say it's, I don't, I can't even. Do we have positions we still need to have filled? That potentially can't be filled by those who are being produced? For example, if we have an English teacher at the high school that resigns. But we don't have any of those positions at the high school.
We may need to hire someone new, yes.
So we still have to be active in the job search, potentially, even though we're.
Right, so for example, um, we have a school psychologist that is retiring at the end of this year. We do not have anyone else in the district that is qualified to be a school psychologist, so we will go out and post for that position. Um, we have, um, the brick classroom at, at J C S that we need a special educator who's qualified to fill that role. So we will still be posting for a few positions, they are not new positions, they are simply positions that have been vacated for one reason or another, that we need to find a qualified.
Not related to the budget.
Correct.
You know, regardless, not in terms of people, in terms of actual positions, titles.
Yes, so twenty nine positions.
Correct.
Have been removed.
So, can I ask? I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to repeat this, cuz I, um, my little T-ray just started, it's all around it. So first of all, there's two, you got.
Yeah.
You, you said, uh, forty two, there's forty four.
Oh, okay. I must have missed count, but I signed a million letters today, I apologize.
So, um, it's, looks like seven of them are reductions in hours, which I assume is F T E change.
Yeah, F T E change, yeah.
So, that is thirty seven, so. Twenty nine people, twenty nine positions are getting eliminated.
Yes.
The other seven. Are, are what? Plus the other, obviously, eight.
So when you look, so, um. If you look at the first column here, you see, um, the first two teachers there, those are reduction in force.
Yeah.
Those are people that do not have seniority to bump someone else, they're, they are not coming down.
Yep.
Um, but then if you look, the, the position right underneath that, that says the position is eliminated, so the position is gone. But that person has enough seniority to be able to go into one of these other positions. And, 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 and that's, it's extremely complicated, and that's why we've tried, we've literally looked at these positions. I mean, at the end of the day, Pam and I were going through the list again, so let's double check that we did this first. Um, the F T E changes are those people that are maybe at a one point O and, and going down, um.
Okay, so we're.
And then, uh, so if you look at the L G N, um, box.
Alright, so I think Nick, Nick actually maybe, maybe just said this, um. So it's not people, it's positions, so. So we're not actually, one of those grade five features is gonna be filled by the reading interventions.
Yes.
Alright, so maybe the, then the right way to look at this maybe is not to, um, not to show us the people, but just show us the positions. So it's twenty nine positions are eliminated, right?
Yes, twenty nine positions.
Twenty nine positions are eliminated, um. Twenty nine. I'd say the, I'd say, say this is the bomb. Because if you count, when positions are, the sheet's. Confusing, I think, like, this reason, yeah, there's only twelve positions on here, that says position eliminated, but.
Correct. But.
Correct.
A- a- and, and so, it's, it's extremely complicated because. The other version is, of this has people's names here, right, and, and so, when you see that, it's a little bit easier to understand because. Of the way the contract works, the way seniority, professional teacher status work, um. Like, so if you look at the middle school, like, these are positions, so the bottom one right there, that's position eliminated, but that person is not able to come back in any other role. Whereas the position right above it is position eliminated, but that person has the seniority to come back to it. It's, it's very complicated.
This is my concern, and I'll be for the answer, this is going to end up, cuz it's public information. Someone's gonna look at this and has no idea what the hell's going on, and then you're just gonna make assumptions that. You said you eliminated three more positions, there's only, there's only.
So what I'm planning on doing, um, not tomorrow, um, but in my newsletter to families next week, is, is walking through the positions that we have eliminated. And that will be done for families, I will not be putting staff names there, but I will be saying, we eliminated. These four positions, we eliminated this program, we eliminated this.
And I think it's also important to include there, those not names. Hypothetically, I'm just making this thing up so no one would forget, if we cut the social studies teacher out of the high school. That role. Could be filled from somewhere else in the district, and that position is gone, that person, however, because of the N T A. Then can move and bump the oldest person at the middle school level, if they're certified, obvious, and retirements. So someone could fill a retirement position, even though we eliminated a job.
Correct.
The person that I could eliminate, so, so twenty nine positions are getting eliminated, not necessarily twenty nine people, it should be less than twenty nine people, I think, right, my. Yes, because it'd be some retirements.
Yes, yes, so, and like, for example, we had a resignation at the high school in a department that we were going to eliminate a teacher. So therefore, we didn't have to eliminate a teacher because somebody retired.
It is very important as well, cuz this always gets me blown out, twenty nine positions, they are admin. They are custodial, they are specialist, they are some classroom teachers, it is spread as best as we possibly could. Across the board, that made the most sense, we didn't just take grade five and say, that's a great one to cut. We're cutting it simply because. From a class size standpoint, had it made more sense to cut the grade five teacher, cuz there's less kids in that class next year, then it would be a cut the third grade teacher. We did our completely best in terms of trying to make this one as fair as possible, and one A, and the most important. To try to keep this as a reduc- as least impactful to our students as we possibly can.
But I think it's also important to note that. Twenty nine positions cut for the schools is, is devastating. This is a huge, this is a huge amount of staff, these are positions that are needed, these are positions that. Provide services to students, they provide support to classroom teachers, um, and.
Based.
We will, we will see. The impact of this moving forward. I don't want the community to think we had twenty nine positions that were just extra and we could cut.
No, but.
It took a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of. Really crappy conversations to get to this point. But nothing about this feels good, at all.
So can we see this? Um, a little, a little differently, so can we see? The twenty nine, the twenty nine positions that are eliminated, the twenty nine positions we will no longer have here. And then separately. The. Number of people, is using, using, that are getting, you know, laid off as well, uh, because. I, I think Nick got a little confused while we were.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's a lot of semantics and, um.
Okay, and I actually, I actually, um, in a discussion with Paul Daniels, I was, I was saying, but, you know, yeah, I look at the sheet, we have like forty, forty four people. Cut, that's our, you know, we're losing forty four positions, can we actually not?
No.
Uh, it's gonna be twenty personnel changes, yeah, I think is the safe thing to say, and someone, like, the, the seven reduction in hours, that's definitely, it's a hit to those people, and they're talking about that. But, but the twenty nine positions eliminated is the actual elimination of that position alone, it would be a one vote.
Okay, and I'll actually, Dinesh, when I share that with you guys, I'll actually include the reductions as well, so if it's, um. A one point O, I'll say we're losing point four of this triple.
Yeah.
Because those, those are, those are losses as well.
Then, this is me being petty, but when we say coach, we need to maybe just clarify that, 'cause I think people are gonna think it's. So like, we just put on there whether it's career coach or curriculum coach, whatever. So like, my other question, kind of circling back to, say, a non-renewal position. Do we have any non-renewals that were also a position eliminated, like, not like double dipping, but like, say, for example, I'm just gonna pick on it, 'cause it's easy. Say we have like a non-renewal guidance position, and we were going to eliminate a guidance, like, we're not, it's not like a double savings, right?
It, no, so, um, there, so, so. Uh, so non, non-renewals are, um, when we let staff go because it's not a fit. Um, there are, will be cases of that, where we're saying, okay, this was not a fit, that person, we're gonna move on, but we're not going to backfill it. Yes, we do have a few of those.
Do we have any non-renewals of where we are backfilling, and could any of these twenty-nine members take those positions?
Yes, potentially.
Okay.
And I also think we're, we might have one or two more retirements between the end of the year, just from conversations that I'm having with staff. So there's also the potential that somebody may able to, be able to come, be called back because one of their colleagues retired.
How does that work, like, do we have a certain timeframe that we can recall them?
Eighteen months. We're actually required to recall them.
So four months, huh?
Mm-hmm.
That's only if there's still a lot of work, though, be ready.
I, I mean, we're required to offer them the position within eighteen months, sometimes people take us up on it, and sometimes. I think typically, it's not eighteen months down the road that we're recalling.
So, thinking ahead, and we all know what's going on with budget, and I'm not gonna get into it. Do we have a list, say there is an influx of money due to what the tax breakers say in the next few months?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have, like, a list of priorities of those twenty-nine positions to bring back?
Yes, so, um, when we last met, we talked, we talked about the positions, and they kind, kind of went down from. Yes, they went down the tier, so we'll do the opposite, we'll start at the bottom and work our way back.
Cause like, my thought, you know, if we're looking at like a dean position, not a priority, in my opinion. I would rather have a classroom teacher back, not a dean, like, I just wanna make sure we're on kind of that.
And, and it also will greatly depend down on when we would get any money, right? So like, if we're not going to get money until November, it's a different conversation about what makes sense at that time, um.
Well, I, I think that's another huge piece, I think, um, we need to make sure we stress that maybe again on Monday, whatever day we're meeting with them, because the override's all, um, good, if the override happens in May, June, whatever, July, it's still gonna hurt us, we still already made those cuts, and people are already going to be probably looking for jobs, 'cause they don't have another one. That like, if that, the longer we extend that vote, whether it be September, October, November, if we start the year with down twenty-nine positions, and that override goes through, let's just hypothesize it, we say it goes through on, you know, October thirtieth. November first, we have the ability to rehire, who are we hiring?
I, I know where you're finding.
It doesn't, I also, don't forget, if, if it passes on, like, on October first, we have to actually then, as a town, go out and collect that tax revenue too. It's, it's not the money we have sitting there waiting, so it's, it's a year, I mean, it's a year, like, without a doubt. And I think that's need to be stressed as well, that, like, these positions aren't just gonna magically go out. They're gone. I think it's almost until next year, they're gone, that's it. I think you almost have to look at it, it's almost like the next year's budget.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, you have, because, if, if this, you know, if we get some of these positions, we could grab in the middle of the year. If, you know, say it's, I don't even know, uh, a special, a math interventionist, if we can get a math interventionist, yeah, let's get a math interventionist. Yeah. You know, I, I just, even in the best-case scenario of a past override, it's not. Actually, I think the other, she did say, I think coming out last, it was, even with an override, unless if it's some, well, that bigger one, we are still losing positions.
Correct.
We have not got to level services with a full, a million-dollar override. Well, and, and the other part, I have, but it's not going to be those, those saving rates. Our positions are gone either way, 'cause our budget closes before. Correct. We actually, or even a perfect party that override. Our books are closed June thirtieth.
And, and also, um, our staff is able to collect unemployment the day after school ends. So, all of our schools are getting up June thirteenth, except for J C S, which gets up June fourteenth, um, and they're able to collect that very next day. And, and so that's an expense to the town.
So when, I, I guess, maybe I'm naive to know about it. When can a teacher collect, for, like, for example, if I'm a teacher that gets laid off, and then I sign a contract to start the next school year in, say, Mansfield, they can theoretically collect.
Until they, until they start.
Until they're employed again.
Yes.
Even though they may have signed a contract, which I would say, pretty much everybody does, 'cause why wouldn't you? You'd be kind of dumb for it.
I mean, I'll be honest, I got laid off three years in a row. Um. I got called back before the end of this four year, every since then, but I, I, I don't know how we do that this year. Um, but we will be posting for a few positions, like those ones that I talked about, um, we cut two out of the three math interventionists. Um, they are all, you know, we're going to repost one of those three positions, we're not posting one of them. But in order to make it equitable, people will have to look for it. So those types of things.
And this is me being nitpicky, but I think from, from you and central office down, the principals really need to hone in, and then do not say guard it, well, papers are out, because what I've already gotten a few emails and calls, being like, my position was eliminated, why? I'm like, I have no idea what you're talking about. So like, and principals, I don't, I don't want to name them, probably, whoever sent these to people, like, give me a school by school, but like, it needs to be a little bit more, like, everyone gets their stuff on this day, if you don't.
And you're off that, you're done.
I don't think that's nitpicky at all, I think. The principals. I, I think that's a, honestly, Jen, I think that's a conversation you have to have.
I'm still anxious.
Yeah. Because, you know, to leave the slap in the face of central office as well. Yeah. We've gone through this entire process trying to figure out how to make this work, and we don't wanna be doing this. And then for them to kind of just be like, oh, well, sorry, your position's getting cut, there's no formal announcement. We, we saw last year, my model teachers, like, told the kids, kids are crying, I mean.
I mean, honestly, I, I, I think it comes from a place of wanting to be respectful and and, and understanding that this is someone's life, right?
There's plenty on a Friday forecall.
Right. Unfortunately, people talk, once you say something, it just goes like, wow, this is unbelievable, sadly.
Sadly, um, so yeah, so I will, um, that's it.
So can we just circle back to, um, finance committee meeting, the chairman available Monday? Didn't realize they wanted us to come again? Like, do we need?
People think for Monday, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's why you volunteered.
It's the board, volunteer the board.
Is this something that we need to do? Like, what is the?
So we were told that we were scheduled for Monday night on Tuesday morning, um, and asked to provide, they want us to present our one percent budget, and they want us to provide, um, a line-by-line salary report um, for every single nor- northern employee, our, the current salary and the projected salary for next year. Um.
I'm gonna have to do. I'm gonna have to brush what that is. That is not the FinCom asking that.
It's one person. One person.
We, in the email I received, which I forwarded to you, I was told that that's what the FinCom is asking for, um. Apparently, that's what they get from the town side. The town side has access to the software to be able to do that, because all of our payroll goes through the town home, we do not have that same software. So it is literally a cut-in-place process from our budget, from our salary book, which is extremely, like, it's, it's not just a data dump. It's going to take Christine and Courtney a huge amount of time for them to pull this in.
I, I, I think that you guys have done enough work over the last few months, that the answer is just no, right now. The answer is no, I'm sorry.
And I asked to provide it tomorrow, and I said, the week, we simply cannot do that. I said, I said, with the, you know, with the week that we've had, um, you know, with the short timeline and the week that we've had trying to figure out all of these layoffs, we, we just don't have the capacity to do that.
Respectfully, say.
We can do, we can get it free from Monday, the one percent, I do not say we can get the salaries by Monday.
I'm confused on what that, why, why do they wanna see the salaries?
Cause I know what they want to see, they wanna see that there's all the salaries, you have what we paid this year, you have the increase, and what's the percentage increase? That's why they want to see it. They wanna see, they're not gonna see names. Look, they're gonna.
They want, it's gonna take, and you can see it. This isn't the first time we've done this exercise, we've done this before for the same person asking. This isn't the first time.
You can't, I don't even worry about that person, 'cause I think we all know who the person is, but FinCom is asking for it. FinCom, he should have all the data.
Who sent the request? It was Mike units, but not the FinCom.
Somebody will pay for that, sorry. I'm sure, I think we all know who the person is.
My, my point is, we do not have the capacity this week to turn around anything like that.
That's fine.
And, you know, ultimately, I report to the five of you. So if the five of you are asking me to provide something, we are more than happy to do, no, whatever. But we just do not have, I, I just don't have the, we don't have the capacity to do that.
In your spirit, too.
You are dealing with twenty-nine, I mean, forty-two letters that are being sent out.
Forty-four.
Forty-four letters to tomorrow, like.
What did we ask for?
This is insane.
Anyway.
So, I, I guess, my, my thoughts on this are this. The line-by-line salary request has nothing to do with the one percent budget presentation.
Yeah.
If down the road, they would like to see that, sure. Let's get through budget season, let's get to town meeting, let's get to the, through the one percent, and then if they choose to begin over the summer, or in the fall, we'll give it to them. Where, where, we have five buildings under your purview with four-hundred-something employees that you have to manage daily. You don't have the time for this one request, respectfully.
Nevertheless, they're going to go through tomorrow.
And they're not gonna go through the nine-by-nine that night.
Enough, we're done jumping through hoops, I'm sorry.
The thing is, to me, the request isn't a problem. I, I just, we wanna see it, why didn't you ask this in February first? Why didn't you say, hey, let's?
Now it's sudden, it's needed.
Now it's needed, we need to, we need to jump through hoops to try to get that done and take away from, one, we're gonna be a crazy day tomorrow. And then, two, obviously, coming off a vacation and everything else, like, to me, it's just insane that you're gonna want, this isn't pulling fifteen people here, and we can quickly run the numbers. You know, if it's a huge, long, drawn-out process, they can't give us four business days to expect that.
So needless to say, I will not be there Monday, 'cause it's probably smart for me not to be there.
Um, and, and it's.
Well, we don't need a call, of course.
We do not, we are, we are just presenting.
So if you do, you do that, and I'm not.
Haven't we already, just to review this, didn't we already present a one percent budget to them?
Yes. So, we, and the five, and like, right. So what Christine has been doing this week, in addition to doing everything that I need her to help me with, and everything.
We're not gonna drop.
Her, her absolute goals.
Again, and that's what I did, we have identified jobs, this is an extra piece of the job that we can't accommodate right now.
So when we give you guys our line-by-line budget, you know, you know all those pages, right? So Christine is in the process of creating that one percent budget line-by-line that we, that we share with you, 'cause and ultimately, that is what we will present to them on Monday night, but I don't know how much else we can present.
There's an idea.
In terms of anything new.
Tell them, we will absolutely give you the salaries, follow them, uh, follow our. But that's, did they already have?
Freedom of Information Act.
No, they, they don't have the information.
No, they do.
They just wanna get it. Then, then know what we're gonna do, we're gonna turn around and tell the FinCom, hey, Freedom of Information Act, it's going to take her, forty hours, it's gonna take Courtney seventy hours, and obviously, one hundred and thirty, or whatever, one hundred and ten hours it's gonna take, is there, I'll be rate this, how much it would cost you to get that information?
And, you know, I, I have to, and I, I emailed Mike this afternoon, and I, and I said, we just can't get this for you tomorrow morning, we, we have to have this week. I do not want to be seen as combative, I do not want to be seen that we're not cooperating, we are one time to cooperate with anything, however.
You can say the school committee said.
Do not have the capacity in a time.
You have given them, uh, the, uh, five-year projections, you have, we, like, you have presented. I, I, this is, I can't, I wasn't.
The problem, the problem is until we can't keep getting punched in the face, at some point, you gotta go on offense. You're gonna give us, you're gonna put all these things against us? We'll do it for you, it's gonna cost you a pretty damn amount of money.
Because at the end of the day.
Because if we keep doing this, yeah, we're gonna play nice, we're gonna play nice, we're gonna, we're gonna play nice to guys. You want it, we'll, we'll do it.
This is another, this is another, I got you. I got you, you're a bunch of liars.
Another budget.
Thank you.
You're, you're putting additional work in front of our already thin-stretch, uh, admin staff. Not pulling this free to get it, you want, you want those in base back to my one, we can chip away at it, you know, on a Friday afternoon and do whatever, sure, four days, we're not doing it. And that's what I do. And that's what the school committee also said.
I just asked you to say.
Okay.
We're good?
We're good.
Alright.
And I'll be there.
So I only have one day, did anybody have anything?
No.
Um, just to remind you, after this lovely meeting, um, that the ITAC basketball game is coming up a week from tomorrow, seven o'clock at the high school. Um, sadly, in the last two months, we've had three parent losses. So, um, I, I, I guess I can go on record in saying this is the last, this is the last year for ITAC, so um, the committee would like to go out in a big way, we have a lot of families to help, it's been a great one, um, but it's just hard, it's been hard to maintain, so, um, tickets are on sale, it's all over Facebook, um, the schools, um, the high school students went to the schools and, and tried to, you know, get the little ones excited, um, so I'm hoping, everyone's hoping it's a good turnout, but, um.
Purchase tickets right online, it's a lot easier in terms of.
And at the door.
And at the door, if they don't sell out online.
Yeah. That's it?
Thank you.
Anything else from you guys? Did anyone wish to do a gen?
Show me.
Say a second?
Say.
I'll be there. Thank you.